Restrictive that perhaps there is in the country. And that if this override, when it expires, if we don't take some action, then by way of your explanation, you know, our local stores who are trying to give local credit will not be able to do so, whereas some of your broader multi-state corporations will be able to.
That is correct. Before the action last year, you had like, if you just think about the credit markets being like this, about this much was already overridden and not subject to Arkansas law. That that comes from banks is not, that that comes from out of state is not. The federal override last year kind of expanded that to do essentially what we're talking about here. But if that is not approved, it goes away. And essentially, probably because of the nature of the federal discount rate, not going to go up until the economy improves. The outlook is the federal discount rate is going to stay where it is now, probably for another year or two. And I know that probably next year or so, cities are going to be wanting to do some of the things that they've done so successfully with this authority. And if they don't have it, they're basically going to have to wait and pay a lot more money.
That's a long answer to perhaps a short question, but the floor is still open.
Now, all three of these issues, are they lumped together on the ballot, or?
Their issue two includes the governmental. There are all the issues in issue two are finance-related. Have to do with governmental loans that we talked about, have to do with non-governmental loans that we talked about. And then there's this other provision about the opportunity to save money or utilize the savings generated by an energy project to pay for itself. And I think that that's kind of makes a lot of sense, but unfortunately, our finance laws are fairly narrow, fairly limited, and it was thought that at least in that small area, cities ought to have a chance to save money. And so, as I said earlier, I think that all the features of this proposal save money. And so, there has been a legal challenge that you might have seen in the newspaper on Saturday. It was filed on Friday. Sort of a last-minute thing. And, you know, I think it's not unusual for these types of proposals to be challenged. And this proposal was challenged, you know, typically as they are, because they're suggested to be confusing and misunderstood or whatever. But I assure you, it's not because of the lack of our effort. We're trying to do the best job we can to make sure everybody's informed of what's required. On the other thing, issue three, just a quick thing. Issue three really makes an existing authority that was passed six years ago, overwhelmingly approved by voters six years ago, to help and help the state be able to be in a position to provide incentives and to help fund the project requirements for a major project. That was when the state was thinking about the possibility of a car manufacturing facility. That's no longer a real possibility. And all that's being done is that provision is take off the caps or the limit about it's got to be a half-billion-dollar investment, it's got to be 500 employees. Those benchmarks are eliminated, but still, the ingredients, the limitations, the hurdles that have to be achieved in terms of multi-state agency approval, the governor and the legislature in terms of anything that was done for finance and economic project are still there. That's just to make something more flexible and usable and effective for the citizens of Arkansas. So, we're working jointly with the State Chamber of Commerce and other interested parties on a statewide campaign. And what I've been encouraging in my role with the municipal league is I've asked and we, the municipal league has encouraged all of our membership and all the cities in Arkansas to get behind it and show a strong, a strong measure of support for this. And I'm happy to indicate that at this time, cities all over the state, large and small, north, south, east, west, Jonesburg, Fort Smith, Bull Shoals, the Dumas, have done this and others in their pipeline. I'd like to get about 100 or so, as many as we can get by mid-October, to really be able to demonstrate to voters that this is a serious proposition, that we have a strong interest in, and it really affects our ability to deliver good services to our citizens and save a lot of money, too. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you.
May I be finished? Are we, any other questions? And I appreciate the questions because they certainly help share the information. We are really encouraging folks to say yes to these two amendments, and it says yes in many more ways to things that we can do as a state.
Great. Thanks a lot.
If there's no other discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-10, 149, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing renewal of health benefits coverage for city employees through Stevens Insurance LLC with Qual Choice as the major medical provider.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any other questions? Any discussion? I know there's increase about 4%, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Bobby Whitfield's here. Mr. Whitfield, you want to come to the microphone in case we have any questions? You know, although I'm sure there are points, as there always are with large coverage of this case, I think that, you know, that the city overall is appreciative of both your involvement, Qual Choice's involvement. I know we're about to make a change that may go through a period of adjustment regarding prescription drugs. And if you want to just give us a little bit of, you know, feel free to comment, and then if you would, stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Mayor, I appreciate your comments concerning Stevens, concerning Qual Choice. I think the partnership with the city for the past three years is working very well.
Let me just pause just one second. We always appreciate our Boy Scouts when they come. If I could just interrupt this just a second and ask our PAC leader, or troop leader, rather, PAC is Cub Scouts, but troop leader, to come to the microphone, just let us know who your young folks are, and we're proud to have them here, and we're glad that you're a part of the evening of North Little Rock City Council. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Troop 18 from North Little Rock, and they're working on their communication badge, and this is part of one of the requirements to come in and sit in on a meeting such as this.
Can y'all, y'all want to just come by and introduce yourselves, because we're proud you're here, and thanks for being a part of Boy Scouts in North Little Rock?
I'm Noah Delishaw.
I'm Jonathan Oakley.
I'm Zachary Fuller.
Brian Chapman.
Grant Moritz.
Rob Moritz, Assistant Scout Master.
And thank y'all for being here. We appreciate it. Thanks for what you do. Whitfield, I apologize for the interruption, but I think the subject matter warranted it.
Always nice to mix in a Boy Scouts and a increase, medical insurance increase.
[laughter]
Little diversion there. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, the comments that I was making is that I think the partnership by way of the increases over the past three years speak for themselves, but just to respond to your question per se, Qual Choice, their Q Care program, which Billy Ann or BJ may want to speak on in just a moment, Kick the Neck Smoking Cessation Program that you're familiar with, care management interventions for seriousness, serious diseases, their network discounts and their cancer care management policy on one side of the coin, I think are working and improving themselves. On the other side of the coin, Mayor, I think that you made, the city made exactly the right choice as it concerns the Argenna Health Clinic. Mr. Sisson, Mr. Smith, Ms. Thomas and I actually interviewed three different onsite physician practices, and again, I think the city's efforts to resurrect the clinic is exactly the right thing to do. I know that the employees were very appreciative of the responsibilities of Debbie Velez, and again, I compliment you on your accomplishment there. Mayor, you also helped design and forward a letter to employees encouraging the participation or the use, I should say, usage of generic drugs. We also looked up the top 25, I believe it was, prescribing physicians here in the city, and again, you signed off on that letter, encouraging generic participation. I don't think this has been disclosed to you, but over the past 12 months, generic participation has increased from approximately 65% to almost 70%, 69.8%. The renewed effort from the wellness clinic, I saw Mr. Rhodes walk in, I think is a great thing. I think that the projects that are on the board there, most recently, the meeting concerning Weight Watchers, I think is a great start, and we're ready to work with Mr. Rhodes. You also asked, Mayor, about changes. Specifically, you asked about the changes with the prescription drug program, and I'm happy to go over the changes in both the core, basic, and our enhanced plan. So, if you have questions there, I'll address those as well. I think we all know from the legislation that each of the changes was a result of healthcare reform. But again, directly to your question concerning the prescription drug card, Qual Choice is in fact changing pharmacy benefit managers, PBMs as we call them, from, or to, I forgot the name of the?
Catalyst.
Catalyst, I'm sorry. We're going to the catalyst PBM. And what that amounts to as far as changes go is that there are about 25 prescriptions that do not meet the current formulary that you have. There are about 15 employees and our dependents using these 25 prescriptions. How do they change tiers? Primarily, Mayor, they change when a generic, excuse me, becomes available, the patent expires, generic comes available. So, it's very customary on an annual basis with all carriers for that formulary to have changes. And what Qual Choice has agreed to do, conceded to do, which I think is very complimentary of them, those 15 employees that are affected by the tier change in the prescription drug card, what they have agreed to do is to grandfather those employees and our dependents in concerning the prescription drugs that have increased for calendar year 2011. For the record, that will not include new employees that are prescribed these drugs. And I should say that the majority of the drugs that have changed tiers, there are in fact generics available.
Do we have any questions? I have one. Alderman Height? And BJ may be able to answer this. In the discussion, BJ, in the discussion for the 2011 plan year was the, do you recall if there was any discussion about the ambulance benefit at the, I think it's currently at $1,000 per calendar year for ambulance benefits? Do you recall any discussion about that, about increasing that?
Yes, we did not discuss the increase in any.
You want to come to the microphone? I'm sorry. One of the things that I know, you know, I was obviously giving a kind of a summary, there are actually overall, there is going to be that increase in premium, but the coverage is due to the recent legislation is going to increase to some significance in terms of those that are mandated by Congress. So, you know, perhaps some of that increase is contained within that, but we are going to have some increased coverage limits due to the congressional inaction.
We are.
Yes, ma'am. You want to tell us who you are?
Yes, sir. Billy Ann asked you with Qual Choice. We did not have any discussion around the increase in the ambulance benefit for the 2011 plan year.
Okay. All right. And the other question I have, too, and it was reported in the Arkansas Democrat Gazette, I believe it was this morning, that there's, and I may be a little bit off on the numbers, but there's a $27 difference bi-weekly for those people that have the enhanced benefit plan. Is that, it's an extra $27 or $26, $27, somewhere in that range? Is that correct? And there's a possibility that those that have the enhanced benefit plan can opt out of that extra premium because of the mandated benefits?
Alderman, actually, I believe the figure that you mentioned, the $27, is the gross premium, and if memory serves, and again, I do have those, but I believe that the per pay period withholding increase is $2 or $3, not the 27 that you mentioned.
So, it'd be per year, then, the annual?
Per pay period.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
What, the employees, you know, are they only able to change their policy once a year? Is that?
During open enrollment.
That's why I was curious, when is open enrollment, in case they do want to switch back from the enhanced to the basic?
You know, I say that qualifying events would also entertain the same scenario.
Okay, so would this be a qualifying?
Open enrollment, right.
Okay.
We'll have employee meetings during the month of, probably the end of October and the month of November, where employees will have the opportunity to change, either go from the core to the enhanced or the enhanced core at that time.
Any other questions? There's a motion in second on the motion, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Baggett?
I think that answered my question. You'll be meeting with employees, with the city, and y'all will be talking, and from what you've heard, are they, are they happy, or, I mean, from what I've?
That'd almost be what you've heard, in some respects, I would think.
Well, we're standing here smiling, so yes, we have had a very good year, a very good last three years. I think we have done exactly what we have said we were going to do, and the employees understand that and appreciate that. And in the meetings that we will have, we will reiterate the benefit changes. We don't want anybody to have a surprise come January 1st, and we think it's important to have that face-to-face interaction with the employees. As well as, we will continue to discuss the wellness programs that Qual Choice has worked with the city in North Little Rock to continue to promote to the employees, the Q Care program, the Kick the Neck, the diabetic program, as any other program that we continue to roll out.
And that's what I had been hearing, too. I just wanted you to say it for the benefit of the.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item, Ms. Whitby?
R-10, 150, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing registration of the North Little Rock Electric Department as a load-serving entity, distribution provider, generator owner, and generator operator with the CERC Reliability Corporation directing naming of compliance coordinator.
I have a motion.
So, move second.
Motion made in second. And this is a tad bit, we'll say, complicated, may not be the correct word, language-oriented, it may be a bit of a challenge. So, I know that our electric department manager is at the microphone. Mike, you want to just give us a brief little summary, and then stand for any questions?
Be glad to, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Who's with you?
I have Renita Noble with me tonight. She is, we will be talking in a few minutes about her role, but she will be playing an extremely important role with our compliance with these reliability standards. She'll be the compliance administrator. That's not referenced in the ordinance, but it's the position responsible for maintaining all documentation to ensure proof of compliance. This is a very detailed and extremely large undertaking she's doing, and we're extremely pleased, and she may very well be making some presentations in the future to council. So, I want her to be introduced tonight.
Renita has a long history with the electric department, and we appreciate both that history as well as the future, and it's an important job, assuming the council goes forward. And Renita, thank you for undertaking that responsibility based on assumption of a positive vote tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I'm ready for the challenge.
And we are, too. With that, you want to give us a brief summary?
Be glad to. One thing Renita does have, she does have a master's in operations research, so she's uniquely qualified for this position. The blackout that occurred in the northeast about seven to 10 years ago resulted in the Energy Policy Act of 2005 by Congress establishing federal regulatory oversight over the national electric grid for its reliability. This act authorized the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, to monitor and ensure reliability of the entire electric grid of the United States. FERC in turn directed the National Energy Reliability Corporation, NERC, to develop and enforce reliability standards. NERC then delegated to one of several regional corporations, the actual enforcement, and the jurisdiction that we're under is a southeast regional corporation, which covers portions of Arkansas and portions of about 16 other states or completely for those states. North Little Rock Electric Department must comply with the CERC reliability standard requirements or face substantial monetary fines. The, we must also, to begin the process of filing, only before October 15th, we must file as a distribution provider, DP, a load-serving entity, LSE, a generator owner for Murray Hydro, a GO, and a GOP, because we also operate a generating facility. We've already filed as a balancing authority. This resolution directs the North Little Rock Electric Department to develop and implement a compliance program to ensure compliance with all NERC, CERC standards. We have developed our program. We have developed procedures and requirements, approximately 400 of them, to ensure compliance, and we will be, are prepared to do the filing based upon council approval on, probably on October 15th, if not a day or two before.
Sounds great to me, but it sounds like we don't have much of a choice.
Well, Congress and empowered FERC, who gave it to NERC, who gave it to CERC, for us to be a DP, an LSE, a GO, a GOP, and a BA.
If we don't do it, we'll be a jerk.
And we'll be, yes, correct.
Sounds like an acronym to me. Any questions? I know Mike's had a chance to visit with us about this. If there are no questions, Renita, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Don't like being a jerk. Renita, welcome to that responsibility, and we feel confident that that job's in good hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item?
R-10, 151, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Garver LLC to provide engineering services on the Shillcut Biopedestrian and Bicycle Bridge project for the planning, environmental, and design phases, and the lump sum amount not to exceed $54,000.
Move for adoption. Second. Discussion, all the women are on.
Would you just kind of explain in here about, you know, that this is a grant with matching funds?
We, we've been given some, not a guarantee, but we've certainly been given a great deal of optimism that $600,000, Mr. Voels, are you back there? You know, you want to, or Mr. Smith? Yeah, it's Mr. Smith, I think. I've talked to both of you, that we have in as a request, and that this would certainly give us the opportunity to acquire that grant, and with these plans in place, perhaps begin construction sometime after the first of the year. And am I seeing you nod or shake your head, Mr. Voels? Okay? And so, you're nodding, I know I've been getting that information from both of you, I think. So, Mr. Voels?
Yes, each year, well, the highway department asks for enhancement opportunity or proposals. We submitted two. Shillcut Bio, we listed our first priority. The wooden bridge over the Shillcut is six foot wide. It's very dangerous, and.
No, it's not very dangerous. It's, it's not, I mean, we wouldn't be having people go across it if it was very dangerous, but it can be certainly enhanced and improved. And with the, all the traffic that we're having, and every day that trail becomes more used by more and more groups, this certainly will provide, it will enhance the safety of that limited choking point, and it will certainly give us an opportunity to move forward with even greater use of that trail. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Voels. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we hope Mr. Rhodes and I can ride a little bit with greater numbers across that trail. With that, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-10, 152, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of North Little Rock to utilize federal aid funds for implementation of the Remount Road Bridge Project.
Move for adoption.
Second. Yeah, let me, we've been given an opportunity, and there's another grant that's available for this, I think up to a million dollars, and we had to make a choice. I'll be candid with the council about, you know, whether this was a priority or this is some funds that also could be used to move forward on the Main Street viaduct. The Remount Road Bridge Project was selected. While that bridge is safe, it's still in a condition that needs to be tended to, and while there was certainly some trepidation in trying to make a decision between two very worthy projects, the engineering department convinced me that this would be a prudent thing to do. And as such, we may very well have that opportunity in a year from now, should we be successful in this. We feel that the project can be pretty well accomplished for around a million dollars in that neighborhood, and so, we're hopeful that we'll be able to move forward with this grant opportunity. Mayor, I'd just like to say that I've had many discussions with city engineer Mike Smith concerning this bridge, and I know he's going to be sleeping better at night once this project is completed. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Don't like being a jerk. Renita, welcome to that responsibility, and we feel confident that that job's in good hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item?
R-10, 151, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Garver LLC to provide engineering services on the Shillcut Biopedestrian and Bicycle Bridge project for the planning, environmental, and design phases, and the lump sum amount not to exceed $54,000.
Move for adoption. Second. Discussion, all the women are on.
Would you just kind of explain in here about, you know, that this is a grant with matching funds?
We, we've been given some, not a guarantee, but we've certainly been given a great deal of optimism that $600,000, Mr. Voels, are you back there? You know, you want to, or Mr. Smith? Yeah, it's Mr. Smith, I think. I've talked to both of you, that we have in as a request, and that this would certainly give us the opportunity to acquire that grant, and with these plans in place, perhaps begin construction sometime after the first of the year. And am I seeing you nod or shake your head, Mr. Voels? Okay? And so, you're nodding, I know I've been getting that information from both of you, I think. So, Mr. Voels?
Yes, each year, well, the highway department asks for enhancement opportunity or proposals. We submitted two. Shillcut Bio, we listed our first priority. The wooden bridge over the Shillcut is six foot wide. It's very dangerous, and.
No, it's not very dangerous. It's, it's not, I mean, we wouldn't be having people go across it if it was very dangerous, but it can be certainly enhanced and improved. And with the, all the traffic that we're having, and every day that trail becomes more used by more and more groups, this certainly will provide, it will enhance the safety of that limited choking point, and it will certainly give us an opportunity to move forward with even greater use of that trail. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Voels. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we hope Mr. Rhodes and I can ride a little bit with greater numbers across that trail. With that, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordnance, Ordnance O-10-70, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it. And let me see if we can take this to third reading, and then I'll ask our city attorney, who's been involved in, you know, discussions on this, to give a summary, and then we can stand for any other questions. With that, please read it, Ms. Whitby?
A joint ordinance for the simultaneous detachment and annexation of land situated along State Highway 100 to be titled the 2010 Collins Annexation to the City of Mammell, Arkansas, and for the simultaneous detachment and annexation of land situated along Corin Dellet Lane to be titled the 2010 Country Club Development Annexation to the City of North Little Rock, making these annexations a part of the City of Mammell and the City of North Little Rock respectively, first reading. There is also a piece of property that you can see on Exhibit B, in which a residential development within the City of North Little Rock has one and a half lots that are actually within the City of Mammell. One of those lots is platted such that if you were in your living room, you would be in the City of Mammell, and your bedroom would be in the City of North Little Rock. I don't know which city you could run for Alderman in, but maybe both. So, maybe that's a good place to have. So, you know, depending on where the bedrooms are, you could say, you know, that's where you live. We think, instead of giving someone that option, we think it'd be a whole lot cleaner if those parcels were both fully within the municipality of North Little Rock. And that's where we kind of reached an agreement after looking at both of these and said, why don't we just swap parcel for parcel? They're not exactly the same size, you know, value can be debated one way or the other. But it works best for both cities to simply peacefully exchange the properties and allow development to move forward.
What's the ownership of the properties? Have they been consulted?
I believe there was some consultation with the owners that went on in the City of Mammell when these were being discussed. Mammell's already approved this ordinance, and I think that they went through some discussions with the owners at that point, so, you know, whatever controversy was defeated then.
Any questions? It sounds like it's perhaps a benefit for both cities from a safety standpoint, from a jurisdictional standpoint. I certainly haven't heard any arguments to the contrary. Any questions?
The City of Mamm...excuse me, Mayor, the City of Mammell is passing a joint similar legislation?
Yes. We've met...we being myself and Robert Boles, met with the city attorney and the planning director for Mammell, probably a year ago. It's been a while. It's been a while. Where this has kind of been in the queue, and that's normally how it's accomplished, is you pass mirror ordinances in both cities to effectuate a kind of exchange like this. And it's just been the process of getting it through the system, agreeing to the language, and that's how it's arrived to be presented before you today. Yes, they've already voted on it, I believe. I think it's passed...I know it was placed on their agenda more than a month ago, and I think it's already passed.
Questions?
All right. I mean, it's obvious that Mammell's getting a larger piece of land, but this is just part of being a good neighbor, so straighten up the lines.
Go ahead and give a motion to adopt on third and final.
I move.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-10-71, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it. And let me make a suggestion. And I know we do this every year, and by way of introduction, you know, then, you know, we should have perhaps even considered the last one because it's quite a lengthy entree, but, well, since it's a tax item, maybe this wouldn't be to waive all readings, so let's just go ahead and do it. Regular, maybe. That's a good idea. All right, just go ahead. Forget that. Ms. Whitby, please call it.
An ordinance allowing a tax on all real and personal property within the City of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, first reading.
Move to suspend rules and place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion? And again, let me just make sure everybody knows, I know I got a couple inquiries from the media. This is something we do every year. It's simply, there's no tax increase. It's just taking care of those funds that the taxes stay the same, and it's something we do every year. On that, with Alderman Height's motion, and second, suspend the rules, Ms. Whitby.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing a tax on all real and personal property within the City of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, second reading.
Move to suspend rules, place it on the third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-10-72, Alderman Height and Mayor Hayes.
We want a call?
We certainly do.
An ordinance updating the bike plan for the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Just go ahead and take this third reading, and then if we got any questions.
Miss Penrose, place it on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance updating the bike plan for the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Mayor, just a comment.
Sure.
For years, even before I became a biking enthusiast and before the bicycle-friendly community mission in North Little Rock, there's been a bike plan in the City of North Little Rock, and Robert Boles has been part of that. The Planning Department has been part of it. As part of our application a year ago, more than a year ago now, actually, but for the Bicycle Friendly Community Award that we received, one of the questions was, does your city have a bike plan, and how often is it updated? And so what we...to comply with some of the requirements of Bicycle Friendly Community application and award, we are periodically updating our bike plan, and we may even do this again in the very near future. But this is just an update...we're updating the bike plan, and the bicycle-friendly community, along with a lot of people in the Planning Department and some other people throughout the city, have been working on this for the past few weeks and months, and we just appreciate your support of this.
Motion to adopt on third and final?
I have a question.
So moved.
Second. On a question?
On page four, under the Bike Pass, the proposed, where it says Camp Robinson Spur Track from West Thirty-seventh Street to Remount Road, should that not say West Thirty-third?
Yes.
Okay. We need to change that, then.
Take that as amendment. Motion to amend saying Thirty-third to Remount, so, Ms. Whitby, you got that? Instead of Thirty-seventh, it should be Thirty-third.
And the first, Camp Robinson Spur Track from West Thirty-seventh to Remount?
Mm-hmm.
Should be Thirty-third?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Yes.
Motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-10-73, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Oh, wait. I got to call the emergency.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Ross, on the emergency on the Bike Path?
Yes.
Bike Plan. White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Now, O-10-73, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing an off-premise directional signs for the North Little Rock RV Park to be mounted on the flood wall along Riverfront Drive near its intersections with Locust Street and Cypress Street in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
An ordinance allowing off-premise directional signs for the North Little Rock RV Park to be mounted on the flood wall along Riverfront Drive near its intersections with Locust Street and Cypress Street in the City of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Ms. Ross?
And don't we already have a sign? I mean, I know that we had recently approved a sign down there.
Mr. Smith, you know, I mean, I...oh, you're standing...sitting right there. Why don't you help us?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
We had a sign, it was like, I mean, there's a sign. I know we approved it. It's been, what, a year or so ago or something?
That sign was at the other entrance for the Razorback and for the...
And the museum.
Okay, so this one's just for the RV only?
Yes, for the RV park.
Let me charge it a little bit.
Alderman Witcher?
Okay. Through time, you know, we've had these discussions, particularly about the Razorback area. Right now, if you go down there, you will find three separate signs, two of which are on the wall. You know, and initially, you know, I had a feeling that, you know, the single sign that we finally put up advertising that area would be adequate. And then we put the address up in lights, and then we left another sign up in lights, and pretty soon it's going to look like we're in Japan or someplace like that in that area. We can put up off-premise signs. You can use directional signs. You can use traffic signs. But I just, you know, object to hanging one more sign on that wall, so.
Mr. Smith, you know, one of the things we continue to get questioned, and perhaps it's the clientele of the RV park, you know, I certainly don't want to make a category statement about myself, but there continue to be people who have difficulty in finding that park, and it doesn't seem like it'd be that difficult to those of us who know because we live here. But signage is extremely important. Those folks that are clientele of that park, by and large, are our age, and I don't know whether that has any directional deformities, but it certainly...our folks, and, you know, one of the things, while we're talking about the RV park, this is completely aside, but we lost one of our co-managers down there, Ron and Sheila Butterwell. We lost Ron about a week ago, and that's, you know, somewhat aside, but certainly didn't want this discussion to go by without underlying our sincere concern for that loss, as well as our appreciation for what those folks do down there. But nevertheless, it's something that we would hope this council would support. Rest assured, it will not become a neon sign mecca down there, Alderman, and I know your concern about signage, but we certainly think this will be beneficial for our clientele down there, and will be very helpful, and I don't know that we're having a whole lot else down there now besides what we are advocating.
Okay. Mayor, to me, it would make so much more sense to have traffic directional signs off those ramps and on the street than one sign lit up on the wall.
Alderman, we are working with the Highway Department now. Mr. Marvin's not here, but they've taken a more difficult position in terms of utilization of their right-of-way. And now, while I'm not so sure whether this is going to be able to be dealt with, I know that they came and took over a hundred and twenty of our signs down that were up, and we're working back through that process. So, we have challenges, and those challenges aren't always easy to rectify with, you know, with directional signs on highway right-of-way, much more difficult than they were in the past. Yes, ma'am.
Do these signs have to be this big? I mean, can you not just put a little thing that says RV Park right there at the entrance or something, instead of...
You know, we've been learning as we go on this RV park, and I think we've had it two years now, and we have listened to these people, and we've watched people get...they get confused, and then they get scared, and then they just choose to leave, and we've seen people do that. And then word of mouth in this business is very, very important. So, it was, you know, we've got a sign company that gave us their opinion, and then I got it. I asked our traffic engineer to look at it, and he was okay with the sign, the size of the sign. You have to remember that C-Wall is really a creature that most people aren't used to, and so when these RVers come down here, they're a little bit intimidated about going through a flood wall, if you will, not knowing if they can get turned around and come back out or whatever else. So, we really have to do...go above and beyond the call of duty to show them the way and invite them into their home for a short time.
Let me ask for a motion on third and final.
So moved.
Is there a second? On the motion?
Ross?
No.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-10-74, Alderman Baggot?
Please call it, and without objection, Alderman Phillips, please, as co-sponsor.
An ordinance allowing an off-premise sign for certain real property located at the northwest corner of Crystal Hill Road and Mammell Boulevard in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules and place it on the second reading, please.
Is there a second? Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggot?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing an off-premise sign for certain real property located at the northwest corner of Crystal Hill Road and Malmell Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, second reading.
Motion to suspend the rules and place it on the third reading, please.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance allowing an off-premise sign for certain real property located at the northwest corner of Crystal Hill Road and Malmell Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, third and final reading.
Alderman Ross?
Did we not just recently have something like this that we was looking at? I'm just curious if anybody else remembers. Okay.
Mr. Bowles shaking his head, no.
This was a, this was a sign that Walmart's putting up, of course, and it was originally designed and set up to put up when they did the onsite plan there at Walmart to do this, and it's, as you turn right off of Malmell Boulevard by the splash car wash there, it'll be right there on the left, so it's, it's not gonna be in anybody's way, it's not gonna cause any problems or anything.
Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Bowles, I thought we, I thought we approved a monument sign for that when it went through planning.
This was originally a pylon at the intersection of Crystal Hill Road, and there may have been one at their second entry, but this site, this triangle was reserved for this purpose, and I thought it had been approved back, but I was informed that it had not gone through the council. All that I can recall are the LED signs we've been dealing with over the last two years, but we may have, I don't recall a monument sign, but this was a pylon for the Super Walmart there, originally planned for that intersection.
I just thought that a monument sign would have been approved when it went through the planning process.
Well, this was identified for this, you know, entry pylon type sign that was proposed, and the applicant's here, he might be able to fill us in with more.
Well, let's just go ahead and go third and final, get a motion. Alderman Baggett, is that your motion to adopt on third and final?
Yes, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Well, now, I've already read it the third and final time, so you're wanting to adopt it?
I understand that, but after we pause, then I always like to do this.
But Mayor, if you will, I still want to talk about this.
For sure.
Okay, all right. Is there an existing sign somewhere on this property now for Walmart?
David, you want to come up, and Mr. Bowles?
Yes, my name's David Elrod, and I've helped develop this region for Walmart. There's a pylon, there's a pylon sign that's approximately a thousand feet to the north at the entrance off Malmel, there's two entrances on this property, for, well, there's three entrances. There is a pylon sign further north.
Are you removing the pylon sign?
No, we're adding additional pylon sign to enhance the visibility, because if you remember, when you go out there, council member, there's, there's the trees that are growing up in the, in the, they were part of the landscaping, that's part of, and they're, right now, they've probably reached about half maturity, eventually they'll reach probably another ten to fifteen feet.
Alderman Baggett?
I've been out there and looked at this, and Walmart sits pretty far off of the highway there.
Right.
And it's hard to, for people to...
Well, you really don't see it till you get past the entrance.
Exactly.
And then you have to double back to Polly Hills Drive.
Hard to see. Alderman Witcher?
All right, are you familiar with the Sherwood Walmart, 107? Okay, are you familiar with the signage for that, that particular location?
No, I'm not. Is it, what's the signage there?
It's basically signage shorter than this, and that Walmart also sits off, off the road.
What's the speed limit right there on that part of JFK?
Forty.
Probably forty.
Because we're fifty-five on this spot.
Well. Mayor, I'm gonna make a comment, you know, I cannot support this under these circumstances. You know, if, if they're willing to change their, the existing sign to a monument sign in order to get this sign, I would, you know, I would, I would do that, but I'm not gonna vote for this.
Alderman Taylor?
So where's the other pylon sign? It's about a thousand feet to the north behind the, if you follow it, it'd be past the Burger King, where Simmons Bank has the location.
Alderman Ross?
Well, I don't understand why you wouldn't, I mean, you said that, would you be willing to remove, move that sign over to this one? Was that ever discussed? Because you said that it's being blocked by trees now, so it's effectively not doing any good if it's being blocked by trees, so.
Well, they wanted to put, like I say, the original plan that they had three years ago was to put two pylons there for visibility, because there's over fifteen hundred linear feet of frontage along there, and just to enhance the visibility, and to be honest with you, just enhance the sales.
Alderman Baggett?
Mayor, if you're coming from Malmel to North Little Rock, the one that's up is visible and easy to see, but if you're coming from North Little Rock to Malmel, it's not visible.
Because of the curb and the...
And you see, because of the curb and because of the distance of, of the Walmart Supercenter setting off of the highway. I mean, if you went out there and looked at it, you know what.
Right.
What I was talking about.
Alderman Witcher?
Okay, if I may ask Robert a question. Robert, have you visited with the Malmel planning folks about this?
No.
Because they had a great deal of interest in it, a great deal of input into it when it was built.
On this side?
Yes.
The attention from Malmel was more of the neighbors to the north wanting to have sufficient buffer. We had discussion about another signal, we were unable to get that.
And design standards also, if you will recall.
Right, for the building and the building...
And I would think that this would be of interest to them.
But no, we've not visited with the city of Malmel about this request. This came in just a few weeks ago.
Alderman Ross?
You said that one you can see coming from Malmel and one you can see coming from North Little Rock, would this one be visible from both directions?
No.
No, this one would not, this one would only be direct...
Coming from the east, going home traffic.
This one would be more visible, more and better visible for the people coming from North Little Rock out to the store. Much more, much more visible.
And we're probably over a half a mile from the closest single-family home.
And it's not gonna be obstructing anything, it's, it's right by the splash car wash there, over to the left as you go in, so it's...
Okay, we have, Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Bowles, how many pylon signs do we normally, I mean, if we allow one, I mean, how many, I mean, do we normally allow business to have?
Well, most lots would have one, the McCain Plaza has two, I think McCain Mall has one, and other center has one, those are traditional, but this is a spread-out lot with a lot of out parcels, and they're really developing this shopping center, Malmel has an entry there off the Boulevard, and then all the prop commercial developments happening on Crystal Hill Roadway, but this is an exception to the norm.
We have a motion, and second, adopt on third and final, on the motion?
Ross?
No.
White?
No.